But we need to make a decision tonight on a liquor license. By the way, before I do this.
One has 15 years of.
Can we share Mr. Hoover's eggs, please? Who can do that? So that he's one of us.
Only, only he can do it.
He can start talking.
Talking, here I am, hello.
We don't have your video.
I'm here.
Turn, turn your video off and turn it back on.
I have them.
I can see him.
See me now, there you go.
I still can't have them.
I can't see you, but you'll eventually come on.
Yeah, I can't see you either, but the reason I want to make sure is we want to welcome. Oh, wait, he left the room.
No.
Right here.
Still there.
Okay. I'm, I want to welcome John. Um, it's his first official meeting. We've been together numerous times. He's probably sick of hearing from me. Um, he got to spend time with Mark. And then I did take him on a short. For the city, didn't even charge him on the bus. It could have been a nice stay, we would have went in my little convertible, but it wasn't nice enough to do that. So he got to meet Mr. Chaddick, let's say the rec center. John is, I think, a good addition and he's already starting out with ideas, thoughts, and catching them real quick. I said, oh, there's Guadalupe, and the first words out of his mouth was, oh, that's where the retention basin is. But he's paying attention. Um, real quick though, welcome John. First is the liquor license, we have to decide because John has to get that in. Is there any feedback or concerns or everybody okay with it going?
I'm good.
That's.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine.
I have no concerns.
Okay. Mark, do you want to work with John first thing in the morning if he needs any, well, Johnny may not be awake, but if you need any assistance, John, you can get that down to them. And I think everyone saw in the newspaper, it's not just Macedonia. Bob Evans is doing it numerous locations, so you could have maybe a mimosa with your ex. Okay, second of all, one of the things I have, John did the minutes for this meeting. And we had him reviewed by myself and Mark. And I made a suggestion, you know, just to get used to go back and look at old recordings. So he did that, and that's where he was creating the minutes and compare them. And he found a couple errors. It's our choice whether we amend those minutes or we can let it go. Um, the only one we may want to consider is the one where the vote was incorrect. And that was, um, the ones where I think Mr. Finley had voted no, correct me if I'm wrong, John.
That's correct.
So to make an official vote, sort of saying everyone voted yes, that's probably the only ones that we need to change. We can amend them at the next meeting. What I'll do is I'll have Mr. Hoover pull it together so that we know the ordinances, the date and everything, for base an agreement for that. Because the official record should be accurate. It was not, it was not a majority or it was not unanimous. We okay with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Good idea.
Good. And just to note, it doesn't change the outcome of the, the actual outcome of the vote on that specific issue, but.
Yep.
For those watching at home.
We're all watching from home.
True.
Except John. John was going to go into the office. Um, last of them, at least before I go into, um, and let Chad do his classroom. I requested all the council members set up your one-on-one with John. Um, I think it'd be great if you could go and spend a half hour with him so he can get to know you a little better. Um, Mr. Hoover has had his vaccines. And if you go in, you have to wear a mask to get into City Hall and into the council room and into his office. What I want you to do is just negotiate direct with John. Um, he and I are still going to keep meeting on an ongoing basis until he's comfortable enough to, you know, just call when he's needed to call. But there are things that come up and very students ask some questions that spot up. So if you'd make sure you do that, then just let me know when you're doing it, so I don't interrupt because I just drop in whenever. Okay, before we go into that, Mayor, would you like to talk real briefly about the sidewalks and then we'll give Mr. Chaddick the rest of the time?
Sure, so in my report tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about an idea to get an RFP for someone to do concrete repair work for sidewalks for people that live in the community. I reached out to the city of Lakewood, they currently have a program. There are, there are some sidewalks that are in town that are in need of repair. It's always going to be the homeowner's responsibility. I've had a bunch of requests for the city to go and take care of that. And that is not within our wheelhouse. And if we did do that, that would be a tremendous impact to our budget. So I'm going to go out for an RFP, see what some contractors are out there. I can tell you in Lakewood, they're charging 225 a square or rectangle, whatever it may be. They're generally five by five or less, which is very reasonable because the problem you have with concrete, uh, generally there's a minimum of seven yards of concrete, which is much, much more than the one square you would need or two or three or four. Uh, and speaking with one contractor this week, seven yards could pretty much cover around 25, uh, rectangles. So I'm going to see if there's a contractor interested in doing it, put it out to the community, we'll waive the fees for it. So if you have one in front of your yard that you wanted to get fixed, uh, you can get it at a reduced rate. Because I think I looked into one in front of my yard and it was around $500. And even that was going to be when they had a bunch that they could put together. So going to talk about that a little bit tonight and just put it out to the community and you'll hear more about that here in the near future.
I think it's a good idea. I think, as I told the mayor, it's based kind of like I want no peckism with AT&T students aggregation. The more people you can get in, the better price you get. Where if I go out by myself, I'm not going to get a really good price. That's one of the things we always talk to our neighbor when we get mulch or trees done. You know, multiples do it at the same time. Um, we've also talked about, you've probably seen it a few, we've got a lot of bike riders. We've got a lot of skateboarders, we've got a lot of walkers and runners. And we've got a lot of problems with the sidewalks. Um, there's cracks, there's holes, there's drops. And it's just about everywhere there's a sidewalk, except I haven't gone down by the high school because those are pretty, they're, they're not as old as the ones around here. Our sidewalks are, how old's Patrick? They're 34, 35 years old.
Yeah, that turns like five years old, it's still pretty good.
Yeah, and the ones on Crow are going to be even older. So, you know, there's areas and I, I personally think it's a good idea. So if we're okay with it, the mayor's going to pursue. Um, the idea is residents still pays for it, it's still their ownership. It's just we can go out and get a better rate because we'll come in with so many. And it'll make me go look, I think, will they do the end of a driveway or just the sidewalks?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about lumping that into there too, but that's another dynamic. But again, it, it comes down to using seven yards of concrete because anything under seven yards, the concrete company gets charged for it, they charge more for that. So if you go, it's called an underload, they charge more for that. So we're trying to get full loads to go out. And I'm sure they'll say, hey, when I get 20 of them, I'll head out and get it done.
Okay, because I know there are a lot of people too. Mine got hit by a snow toe in here, so I got a crack. At the end of the driveway, the rest of the driveway, we had it done a little years ago, so. We wanted to, we wanted to redo the driveway and someone at City Hall forced me to widen it because that was the law 30 years ago. You had to make it double. So it works. If you have any other feelings or questions about it, please direct your comments to the mayor. And then next meeting, he'll give us a report out, hopefully have good news for us. Without, without further ado, if we do a drum roll, we will introduce Mr. Chaddick. Um, we could talk a little bit, you know, um, the meeting, we had talked about the impact on the budget. At some point, this will impact the budget. So, you know, there's, might be concerns from residents of if we change all this, what's the impact to the budget? And that's why you'll see the amendment that Jessica's going to put forward. And Mark, if you feel good enough, you can explain that one. But let's let Jason first go through and answer any questions on this legislate, this short piece of legislation. Jason, take it away.
Thank you, Councilmember Tully. Um, and to kind of reiterate from last session that we had, uh, you had announced about sending any questions people might have. I did not receive any questions. Um, I was able to touch base with people and get a little bit of information. Um, so I'll go through a little bit of that here as we go. Uh, this is a budget neutral change to our structure of staffing. So there is no negative effect to our current and existing budget and to the budget as we go to the near future. Um, are you guys all there? I apologize, my screen just like reloaded here on Teams. So again, budget neutral. Um, this opportunity that we took was to go through a staffing restructure. Uh, so that way we could really work to meet not only our current needs in parks and recreation, we're also aiming to meet our future needs. And by those future needs, we're talking about it allows us program and facility expansion over the next several years, which is something we have not been prepared for. I can say this restructure does allow us that opportunity going forward. And it also creates a opportunity for us down the road. However many years it is, could it be two, three, four, five years down the road? It presents opportunities that are pretty unique in the field, whereas we can make entry level positions. Whereas right now, our current structure does not allow for entry level positions. Um, so that really helps us to build towards the future. I just want to really stress that to everybody. Uh, this project took place beginning back in December with some initial meetings and then transferring that all the way to, uh, literally a couple of weeks ago, we were still going through some meetings and getting things prepared for you guys to present to council. Some of the things that I wanted to do a quick screen share and get you guys some information on was can you guys see my screen? You should see a graphic on here from a PowerPoint.
Yep. Just.
One of the things that I really wanted to show was some of the transition we went through of basically itemizing out our lines of business. As you can see on the sheet, uh, we'll look to, from your left to your right, we have aquatics, events, rentals, sponsorship, marketing, membership. Uh, then hitting into outdoor rec, which is something we don't even currently have. Um, if you look under, uh, sports, there's several things under sports that we just do not currently have. It's not part of our operation, things the community are asking for programming wise, we just haven't been able to supply. And we have an opportunity for fitness expansion down the road. Uh, you see a number of fitness classes listed, however, most of these we can't even offer at the current moment. And I'm not talking just because of the COVID environment, I'm talking we need advancement in our programming. Then also under programming, one thing we have here is we have some sports leagues, we have swimming and some different activities. What we have been behind the times in is actual programs for youth and also a place for the youth to hang out in the facility. So these are some of the things that we're currently working on right now with staff. So I just wanted to highlight, this was one of the big first steps we took, uh, going through our lines of business and then highlighting what we have and what we feel we can build to. Just a couple of important steps we took along this way. This gives you an idea of what our current structure looks like as far as an organizational chart with an administrative coordinator, membership and special programs coordinator, products coordinator, um, recreation programs coordinator, which is currently vacant, and a building and facilities maintenance, uh, person that is currently vacant. And if we fast forward, I can show you the structure that we are looking to go to, but then give us an administrative assistant. That's just a realignment of title for Cindy that would put her in alignment with, uh, some of the other offices there at City Hall. And then we would, uh, basically go into a recreation supervisor. As you see the, uh, two middle positions and then the outside position, two supervisor levels where we would take them essentially from a grade six to a grade 10 uh, based on their job duties and supervision requirements of the position by FLSA standards. Uh, that would make them exempt employees. I can tell you that the, the effects for us are already people that are currently in grade 10. So we also had the vacancy from Alan Hamsky and he was in a, he was pay wise, he was in a grade 10 range as well. That's why this comes out to be a budget neutral move for us. It does not increase us beyond where we were going to be anyway. And going forward, it doesn't make it any different than we were already going to experience. So this just gives you a little bit of a rundown here of what we would be looking at, uh, going forward. And I can get my screen to come back. All right. So really with this, uh, what we're looking for is to be able to create the future of Macedonia Parks and Recreation. And this is really our design and staff has all been involved in this. Uh, so it's been a real pleasure to work with them, go through this process, work with Mr. Gedetti and Director Smith as we've gone through the HR and legal realm and ramifications. And also to work with Director Larissa to discuss budget earlier in the process. And that brings us to where we are today, where, uh, we are definitely in need of staff. And we are feeling the ramifications, much like many businesses, as you read in the newsletter. Uh, the last week, there are some restaurants that are shutting down, they can't find part-time staff. Uh, restaurants that are coming into restricted hours, we're also having difficulty finding part-time staff. And one of the things in the park and recreation field that we run into, May and June are prime hiring times. And right now, we're on the cusp of running into a situation similar to what I experienced last year. Uh, getting hired pretty late, uh, pretty early into the summer, yet not able to start till the end of summer. So at this point, uh, as we move forward, the hires that we would make, it is going to be getting us ready to transition into fall programming. Summer will be at least at a midway point. There's a lot of potential, we might not have someone until August as far as, depending on where they're coming from and what kind of, you know, job they may have to lead. Uh, we are, we are really in need of moving forward on this, so that way we can, uh, get the appropriate staffing levels and we can continue to advance this, this of our community. And I just ask you guys for your support and I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
You're muted.
Oh, you're muted.
All right, that's. Do you want to run? Going from six to 10, when does that take effect that that will impact the budget because it's a raise?
Uh, with staff members, so basically, all of the salaries that were in the positions were within that range anyway. So there is zero effect to the budget, we're not changing anyone's pay. And as we bring it, because what happened was we had so much longevity in positions. So that drove the rate of an employee, regardless of what pay grade they were in, that drove their actual rate up. So we're in, we're in, I guess you can look at it dual fold. We're in a really good situation because we had people that have been here for a long time and they made a higher end of salary. So that's given us more room to work with. So we are literally not affecting our budget in any way that would have been different from what we were doing before. And I'm talking into the future years. We are literally in the same boat.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jason, how did you, um, come up with the job descriptions? We got a bunch of job descriptions for the different positions in the packet. Uh, how did you guys determine like what all the, the, the requirements would be for each job?
That's a great question. We, so that initial, uh, graphic that I showed you, that was actually from Gabby's PowerPoint. Gabby was our intern, she is currently doing some part-time work with us. She had done an internship presentation and that was our line of business strategy workshop that we went through. So putting all of the lines of business on the board and then dividing them into positions, not only that made sense, but created balanced workloads as well, that was the first step to what we did. And then as we made changes, uh, within, and I say changes loosely within the job descriptions. There was, I can tell you, three different years worth of something that was put together. I kind of quasi job descriptions and we were able to mesh a lot of things together. So just, so we were able to come up with a semblance of job duties that match for the various positions. I mean, we're talking 20 years of Parks and Recreation job descriptions that were going through, many of them very outdated. So we were making them in alignment with today's standards and what we're asking of our workforce. Because our staff has truly been working out of job alignment. And now we're trying to redirect that to get them in a proper job alignment. And, uh, with that, you also have the various levels, like supervisor levels who's overseeing staff. So now we do require some supervision experience of staff, uh, to get into a position and you would have full-time experience leading into that. So that's a little bit of what dovetailed us into, uh, not only the job descriptions themselves, also, uh, getting into some of the supervision responsibilities.
Anyone else? If not, their quest today is to see if we can, um, A, pass the amendment and then pass the actual ordinance so they can move forward with, uh, looking at the hires and that. I'll take care of your soccer programs for you.
Really?
I ran it for 10 years, what the heck?
Take her up on it, she's fastidious.
So, Councilmember Tully, we now have that on record that you have, uh, made, entered into a verbal agreement with us to run soccer.
I just want to know, I see pickleball, where's kickball?
You see, what, I'm sorry? Kickball is on there.
Down in the south, kickball, people that are in their 30s and 40s, I laugh when I go to watch them, but they're all playing kickball. And I'm like, okay, kids.
Yeah, we had, we had kickball next to, um, soccer on the sheet. Kickball is, we're actually going to run a kickball league in the fall.
Yeah, I, the lady at work, when I told her about it, said you need to call your rec center now and get them to do it. She plays soccer still indoor, so it's like, okay. Any other questions? If not Jessica, you are the person who owns this one and, um, I can't remember who I assigned the second to.
I think Vinnie.
Okay, so Vinnie will be the second.
Got it, got it.
Also for the adoption, if there's no disagreement, we're going to go forward with adoption. Okay.
I'm on board with you.
I have one other thing that I, I need to bring up. I was going to bring it up in new business and I'll bring it up today. Mark, um, and I and Chris, um, our inspector have had discussions with the resident today. Um, sent a letter about RVs and RV parking and how come now they're not only their RVs, but they're adding their boats? And I know there's one in the northern end of the town whose RV never moves. And it's in the driveway, right next to the next door neighbors. And she, hers is about somebody on Shepherd and there's also one on Crow. So what I would ask you to do, we're not going to take any direction tonight. Um, I'll have John send out everyone the language of what is in our codified right now. Um, Chris will tell you that it was not our current mayor, it was a previous administration that kind of had them back off during the summer. I don't know if that, although I know my neighbor at the street cat sighted, so it's, we're going to be very careful here. I'm a real believer, if we're going to have an ordinance, you enforce it. Kind of like what we just did with putting in the pots. If they're going to have it, you enforce it. There is no, oh, it's snowing or it's raining, you, you got to enforce it. So take a look at it, John, make a note and send that out to everybody tomorrow or Monday. Today is Thursday, isn't it? I'm all screwed up. I had to work at 6:00 AM today. I'm like, what year is it? And then we'll talk about it at the next meeting because we have the choice that we could remove it, we could amend it. That says it's only during certain times of years, or we could ask the administration to please start enforcing it. So, and that's another thing that we can put out to the residents. Um, you know, we're out there citing for grass. We're out there citing for, you know, helping people with branches, the mayor is going for sidewalks. You know, we want our town to stay what it originally was intended to be, which is a nice looking town. And RVs and boats, although Greg would like to have a boat, that's why they have docks to mormat, you know? He said if he got one, he'd leave it out at, uh, Twin Lakes or out at, uh, Kymatuming. So take a look at it, John, I'll send it out to you. Does anybody else have anything? Otherwise, we'll give you some time to hit the restroom. Okay, be back in five because we don't want the mayor to be late when he has to open it up or we're not here.
All right, hello and welcome to the May 13th council meeting. It is 7:30 PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Brant?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
And Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Thank you, next we will do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation.
One nation.
Indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Hey, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes that were provided up for the Thursday, April 22nd, 2021 regular council meeting.
Second.
Do we have an amendment for that?
No.
No, not this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next is public comments. Mr. Hoover, do we have any public comments this evening?
No public comments.
Okay, next up is correspondence from the clerk, Mr. Hoover.
To have two pieces of correspondence, one directs to the city of Macedonia from Kristy Raklinsky. Dear city Macedonia, I cannot thank you enough for all the help in locating my father. Fire police, EMS, first responders, city service workers. Truly blessed and grateful for everything everyone did. Thank you, Kristy Dynas Raklinsky. And then I also have a letter from Hawkins Construction Company, addressed to the mayor, says, dear Mr. Mayor, dear Mayor Molar. On Monday, April 19th, I had an accident in my wood shop at home severely injuring my right index finger. I called 911 for the squad and in a matter of a few minutes, they arrived. I don't remember all the firefighters that showed up, but I do recall seeing Lieutenant Lewis. The firefighter that rode in the back of the squad with me called a couple of hospitals to make sure there was a hand surgeon available. They took me to the university hospital's main campus where the hand surgeon was able to sew my finger back together. So far, it is healing up fairly well. My wife told me that Assistant Chief Solinski was on scene and actually looked over to my shop to see if there were any parts of my finger left behind. She said Chief Ripley was also there. Just wanted to say thank you for providing such a fine service. I've had several occasions since I lived here to utilize the rescue squad. Each time, everyone has not only been very professional, but compassionate too. On days I would rather forget, it is comforting to know that we have such fine people doing a job that isn't necessarily easy. Please relay my thanks to the members of the fire department and the police department for taking great care of me. I'm very proud to say I live here because of the good services the city provides. Sincerely, Mike Hawkins.
And I'll just add to that, that Lieutenant Lewis was present, firefighter Matt Snowden and firefighter John Schwab. And, uh, Mr. Hawkins is a upstanding member of our community that also volunteers his time on our civil service commission. So it's, it's reassuring to, to get a thank you from folks for the hard work of our, our fire department. So chief, please make sure you let your staff know that they are appreciated and people are recognizing them.
Letter has already been shared, thank you, Mayor.
It must be, uh, he must be really appreciative if Mike Hawkins is willing to admit that he did something wrong in his shop. So that's, that's big stuff there.
Okay, moving into pending our new legislation, we have one this evening, which is ordinance number 25.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 25, 2021 for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
An emergency ordinance amending section one, ordinance four dash 2021, which established the compensation schedule for the non-union city employees of Macedonia effective January 1st, 2021.
Director Chaddick, please give us a synopsis.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a restructure of the, uh, recreation staff at the Macedonia Family Recreation Center. Uh, this would afford us the opportunity to do a budget neutral restructure of staff duties and, uh, change a couple of position titles. That would help us not only meet our current needs as far as serving the community, it will also help us into our future operation, which will include both program and facility expansion. And this would also help us create an opportunity down the road, uh, should we see facility expansion. It would give us the ability to, uh, later create some entry level positions that could be filled and have people have the ability to progress throughout our organization. Um, this project has been going on since initial pre-meetings back in December of 2020. And then for the last five months, uh, staff has been working together to go through this restructure while realigning job duties and, uh, designing, uh, areas of responsibility. Uh, this opportunity gets us moving to the future. Again, budget. responsibility. Uh, this opportunity gets us moving to the future. Again, budget neutral because this, uh, this, this, uh, position adjustment allows us the opportunity, uh, to continue building on what we already had in place. Uh, we've had some job vacancies over the last couple of years. Sorry, my dog's going nuts next to me. Apparently he's liking this as well. Um, so we had, uh, some job vacancies over the last, uh, year and these positions had people that had been in them long-term. So it also had a higher salary, which is by changing a couple of positions from grade six to grade 10 has no budget effect to us. Uh, this is our opportunity to continue to advance the operations and, uh, we will look for council's approval and begin our process of looking for candidates immediately, knowing that it will take us still a couple of months to get everything filled. We would like to have people in here and prepared for fall programming.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Uh, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to amend ordinance 25, 2021 by adding the following text at the end of section two. The text is, this amendment shall not impair the city's compensation of current recreation center employees until the time such positions are vacated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 25, 2021 according to law.
Second.
Call call?
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
No.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
That's number 25 carries. Thank you, Director Chaddick, to your staff and you for putting this together. We do appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, guys.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I will move into the mayor's report. Our mayor's court report from March 1st for two, through March 31st, 2021 is $22,947. And from April 1st through April 30th, 2021 is $16,409. I'm going to start tonight with a proclamation for EMS, National EMS Week from May 16th through the 22nd. And it reads, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members, members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need of 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or, and injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of fire responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, public officers, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is to appreciate and recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nick Molnar, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through 22nd, 2021 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Okay. So next on my list is I want to talk about concrete sidewalk repair. Um, it's come to my attention, a lot of people have, have reached out to me and asked about the city funding repairs to sidewalks in front of their homes. I want to be clear in saying that all sidewalk repair and things in the tree lawn are the responsibility of the homeowner. If the city were to go and try and repair those, it would be a dramatic impact to our budget. And it's just not something that's feasible for us. I want to put that out there first. So in knowing that, I'm going to put out an RFP for a contractor, uh, to see if someone would be interested in doing a bulk rate where a bunch of residents could go and put their name into the hat. We will waive all the fees for the repair of sidewalk in front of their home and see if we can get a better rate for that. Uh, we're going to work on that here in the near future. I reached out to Mayor George of Lakewood. They currently have a program. They run it a little bit differently than we do, but I'm trying to get these at a reduced rate. So if you threw your name in the hat, uh, you may get it at a reduced rate. If you're interested in doing it, I know there's a lot in town and, uh, uh, Councilor Tully and I talked about this pretty extensively to try and come up with an idea or something that can help folks in our community. And I think this is a good way to start that. So, uh, we're going to implement that here soon. I should have something by the next meeting to put out to the public to show what we can do and how it would work and, you know, try and get a reduced rate for everyone. So it's, it's a little bit cheaper because I know that I have one in front of my home and I think I called about it. It was around $500. I can tell you that Lakewood does them for 225 per, per rectangle or square, whatever you want to call it, or whatever they may be. So we're going to try and work that and there's more to come on that. I also want to recognize our restaurants of the week. Uh, we have Bob Evans, Taco Mexicanos, and Culvers, three great places in town. If you have a chance to patronize them, I would encourage you to do so. Also, I want to recognize, uh, Police Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is May 15th. Uh, for those of you that do not know, we did have an officer pass away, uh, on our watch, Gary Pastor, and we, we keep him in our prayers and in our memories because that's something that, uh, is very tough to lose someone in, in the line of duty. And we, we want to show that respect for that gentleman and the other officers that may have lost their lives in the line of duty. So, uh, please keep that in mind on May 15th. Second last thing I want to touch on is I have a social media influencer in today. Uh, we're, we're moving into some new times. Uh, with me being in place, I'm looking for new ways to promote our community. So today I spent a lot of my day with a gentleman by the name of Sir Yat. What he does is he goes to different communities and it's, he's mostly on TikTok, but he's also on YouTube. He's on Facebook. I believe he's on Twitter and Instagram. So what he does is he kind of gives the highlights of a community and some of the nice things that they have. And he's been all around and I've, I've been watching a lot of his videos and seeing where he's been. And I think it's a nice way to give a little snapshot of what the city has and what we can offer and some of the neat things. So just a few examples, we went to Reinecker's, we went to Zuki Sushi, we went to Longwood Park, we went to Fun and Stuff. I mean, we kind of showed some of the neat things, Memorial Park. Uh, so we kind of showed all the neat things we have in town. And once he completes his, his video, I'll definitely put that out on our social media and put it on our website. And hopefully you can peruse that and get a, get a little view into what he did today because it was a lot of work. And the nice thing to start the day, we did it in front of City Hall with our beam from nine 11. And we also had our ladder truck there, which I know we're all very proud of. So it's, it's pretty neat. It was a nice thing today to do and it promotes our community. So I, I think it's all good stuff and I hope you guys enjoy it when that comes out. And last but not least, please do not drive distracted. Put the phones down and drive the car. All right, moving into committee reports.
Um, nothing to report from the Parks and Rec Committee. Um, I don't, I don't know if I communicated this last week, but we had, or at the last meeting, but we had been given the same presentation about the changes at the rec center ordinance 25, and everyone was on board with that. So I'm sure they'll be happy to see that that passed and see what comes from that. Um, our next meeting is next Wednesday at 6:00 PM. Uh, it's a virtual Teams meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
For the cemetery board, I'm checking with their administrator, Mr. Snell. Um, May is usually when we host the annual meeting with all the communities. And I've asked him if he could attend at our next council. If so, then we would request that we do it at 7:15, just like we do every year. And, um, I'm just waiting to confirm it with them and I'll let John and Nick know, the mayor. Thank you.
Any other committee, committee reports? Hearing none, I will move into department reports, starting out with Director Chaddick.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I will go through a couple of things before I get to the big exciting part. Um, we have a fun event this weekend. The community garage sale will be going on, on the 15th and 16th, so Saturday and Sunday of this week. So if you check out our website and also our social media, uh, for the MAC rec, you can find mappings of the garage sales and their locations. So I encourage everyone to get out, get into the community and see what's available for purchase throughout. We have a lighting project going on currently. Uh, this was done via grant. Uh, we have all of the, uh, public-facing lights in the rec center being changed currently to LED lights. It will have a big energy cost savings for us at the rec center. We're very excited about this because we are getting rid of 21-year-old lights in many cases. And we are now discovering certain areas of the rec center that need cleaned because we can see them very brightly now. Uh, so we are getting on top of that, excited for it. We have changed our annual shutdown to August. We will be releasing dates, uh, once we work out, uh, the parking lot project, uh, as we've moved that. I'll let, uh, Mr. Jalati talk a little bit further about that part. And I, I encourage everyone who is interested in participating in summer camp, uh, to get their children signed up quickly. We are running out of spaces. Uh, we're obviously limited on space, uh, based on our facility accommodations. Uh, so I encourage everyone to get signed up quickly. Uh, several weeks are already sold out. If they are sold out, please get on a waiting list. We might have the ability to expand down the road, um, as , uh, regulations continue to change with COVID. And then lastly, the big one I want to talk about is Summerfest. The Spirit of Macedonia will take place June 4th and 5th in the MAC rec parking lot. Uh, we're excited about this and one of the big reasons the project moved. Uh, we are looking forward to, to fireworks and, uh, carnival rides and a lot of great food. And I would also like to highlight, uh, we are going to be running the 5K. That is on our list right now. Our 5K will be presented by Christine Wissler, uh, Lee Max Traditions. She will be our title sponsor, uh, for the 5K. And we will have a beer garden available this year once again. And we have partnered with the Nordonia, uh, Nordonia Hills Soccer Association. So NHSA has partnered with us on this and they will be providing, uh, our, our beer during the course of the event. So we're pretty excited about this and we'll be releasing, uh, information about that, uh, later, once we get everything ordered, uh, so that way everybody can know what's going on. Uh, thank you, mayor. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Did you mention the food truck Fridays?
Oh, thank you. I'm so, I'm so excited for, uh, Summerfest here. I forgot about the food trucks. So tomorrow we have the Cleveland Cookie Dough Company coming in and off the griddle. They will be in Longwood Park. They will be over by the baseball fields as we have several baseball games and our T-ball program that just kicked off last week. They'll be out there. So each of the upcoming Fridays in celebration of baseball season, a lot of activity going on. We will have various food trucks. So be sure to check out our social media and website for more information.
Thank you. Director Collins?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, over the past two weeks, uh, I've closed out, uh, 31 tickets, laid the groundwork for two major projects that are coming up and, um, worked through some more of the transition for the finance department to their new, uh, software. Their old software was taken offline today and over the next couple of weeks, they will be tradition, um, transitioning to the new software. I just want to take an opportunity to thank all the department heads and all the other members of the other departments that went through the training over the past week, uh, in preparation for the new finance software. I hope that everyone is in a, in a comfortable position and that it'll help everybody get things done quicker and more efficiently. Also, I'd like to take an opportunity to, uh, welcome Mr. Hoover. Um, I've had a couple of interactions with him so far and they've all been positive and I look forward to, uh, working with him in the future. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you. And you have a very busy, busy department, so we thank you as well, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Director Jalati?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, road program paving is scheduled to begin in about two weeks. Uh, so that's good news. We're all happy about that. And as I believe all of council is already aware, uh, the improvements to the rec center parking lot, uh, are now scheduled to take place in August. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Golden?
Is the two, excuse me, is the two weeks include the work on Valley View, the drainage, or is that later?
Uh, Ms. Tully, that's a separate project, so that would be later, separate contract. So it would be later.
Thank you.
Chief Golden?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, dispatch continues to, uh, change over to 800 megahertz radios. I want to thank Sergeant Brian Glance. He's been a phenomenal, uh, assistant in there to getting everything converted over and changed. And, uh, I don't know if we could do it without him, but, uh, he's been phenomenal and, uh, the process has been going pretty well. Um, Chief Ripley has been instrumental in getting this, uh, changeover. It's his project and, uh, he's put up with a lot of, a lot of stuff. I see him smiling. So God bless him. So thanks to Sergeant Glance. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Director Nataban?
Thank you, mayor. And I'm a little disappointed tonight. We're not sharing any reports together like we usually do. You know, we're on the same page. Um, but I do want to report that, uh, the concrete work at Field B has finally been completed. This is the walkways and pads for our bleachers. Uh, the contractor's been contacted for the bleacher install and we're hoping to have them in next week. Uh, tomorrow we'll be doing some grading work next to all the concrete to get, uh, grass and straw put down, uh, seed and straw put down so everyone can walk on it finally. Uh, appreciate everyone's patience for the, who've been having games over there. Know it's been difficult because we've had areas roped off. Um, the rains certainly didn't help us last week and a half, delayed us, but, uh, happy to finally get that done. Uh, with our field maintenance program that we have, uh, we were able to add another mound, pitching mound to Field C. That is the other fenced infield, same as Field B. Um, and they have also extended the infield to sharp two, except for 80, 80-foot base length. Uh, so that will allow some older age groups to play on that field if needed. And lastly, and finally, I know we've been getting some phone calls, but the mulch, free mulch for residents is finally done. The grinder is out of there and is now open. Uh, we are changing our locations this year to make it easier for everyone. It will be at our 9,000 Valley View location. Our gates will remain open at all times so residents can come in there and, uh, pick up on the weekends, evenings. The pile is huge, so bring everything you can, take what you can. Please help us out and looking forward to getting that pile out of there. COVID certainly, uh, brought more branches to, to our facility. So a lot of mulch out there. And that's the end of my report, mayor.
I think that that pile may be a record too, because I saw that and I was thinking, my God, it's a mountain over there.
It was at least double the size of what we had the previous year, at least.
Come one all, come one all and get it. It's, uh, for Macedonia residents too, and just want to be clear about that.
Yes.
Uh, we also want to touch on real quick, John. I, I know through your department, we were doing the pavilion rentals. Is that flowing through the rec department now?
Yes, that's, it's always flown through the rec department, through the rec department.
I know. So I just want to add to that the Veterans Memorial has a pavilion there that is also part of it. Uh, we had some discussions this week, thanks to Counselor Brandt that was working on it. Uh, I did decide that for Veterans Park, if you are a veteran, you will get that for free. I am not going to charge a veteran to rent that facility when you're a veteran, because I think that's just the appropriate thing to do. So, uh, you can call the rec center and, and rent that out however you want. Just put your name in the hat so we know you're going to be there. That's all we ask. Okay, Chief Ripley?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, as Chief Golden stated, uh, we are up and running on our 800 system. It was a very exciting day. Um, it certainly was a project that took a very long time, longer than we anticipated. Um, the speed bumps, we overcame most of them. And we're still working on some of them, but it's, uh, been a dramatic effect. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen, but not so you can see, but I need you to listen to something. And I think it demonstrates really well why we had to do what we did. So just stand by a minute.
You can do it. I believe in you.
Thanks. Thanks, Kyle. Oh, there it is.
It's like Tim Cosgrove on a mayor's and managers meeting.
I hope he turns himself into a cat.
Well, that's radio traffic on our old system.
Then his buddies can get him out of the tree.
Right. This was, uh, that was off the old system.
We didn't, we didn't hear it.
You're not, you're not, you're not sharing your screen.
Oh, wow.
Was that the joke? The old system we can't hear on?
We really can't, yeah.
Share content. Help me, Kyle. Ah ha.
I can't see what you see.
Control shift E.
I got it.
Oh, yeah, there is a shortcut. There we go. There we go.
This is the old system.
1554.
So that's the old system. Um, and that actually was a very good radio transmission from Hillcrest. Uh, this is the new system.
2241, 22?
2241.
41 is arriving Hillcrest.
Awesome.
Um, so that's a pretty big difference. There's also some areas for law enforcement that were difficult. As I've stated, since we began talking about this project, what feels like decades ago, that it was more, actually more important for law enforcement because they're out there working by themselves. So I think it took a lot of anxiety down for our police officers, for my crews, that they can be heard in an emergency. Just last night, we had a fire in Sagamore. Dispatch was able to traffic, copy all of our fire ground traffic, which is phenomenal. B and C Communications, who we contracted with for most of the work, installation work and stuff, they're currently working on installing our old 420 equipment into the service department, so it's going to improve the communications in the service department, which will make those guys real happy. They're going to have some portable radios. And it's also going to affect Parks and Rec because we're going to get some radios to them. And we will be using that system for Summer Fest come June 4th and 5th. So it was a long time coming. I believe it was worth the wait. And now we can go forward. We were the, one of the last two communities in Summit County to go on the 800 system. Unbeknownst to us, the City of Hudson Fire Department and the City of Macedonia, we're working with two different vendors, and we went live on the 800 system the same week. And the entire county is now on 800. I see Mr. Garvis smiling because our 800 radio traffic within 24 hours was also on all the scanner apps, so I think the transition's complete, correct, Mr. Garvis?
I, yeah, I believe it's complete, and I think you guys did a great job. I just want to commend you and the police chief on something that I've wanted to see completed ever since the residents approved the levy that helped us do this. I think it's, it's great for the two departments. And the ancillary effects of what you're going to do with repurposing the radios, I think is great. You know, some places might have just shut that system off and moved on. I think how we're repurposing that for other, you know, departments in the city is really good. So, thank you.
I think everybody benefits. So that's enough of a report for me, Mr. Mayor, unless someone has any questions.
Well, I thank you, Chief, and just to be clear, Chief Ripley has pretty much managed this project from the start, and as Chief Golden alluded to, he's had some help from Sergeant Glance, but Chief, you do get a lot of recognition because you have owned this thing from the beginning, and I can tell you that the chief has come into my office a few times with a very stressed look on his face because it has not been an easy transition. But he has done a heck of a job getting this thing up and running, and I'm very thankful for it. And I can tell you, that's piped into my office and is so crystal clear. It's unbelievable. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. There are times I didn't want to own it. I can say that. But in the end, we're good now.
And I just want to echo what Jeff said and thank the residents for passing levies that made this happen. It's just great that you guys believed in your community and knew that the fire and police departments had needs. And this is just great. It's going to really, really benefit everyone.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Okay, next is Director Smith. She is, excuse this night, she is out of illness, so we will move to Director Varys.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know, we ran our last check run yesterday on the old system. What we'll do between now and running the first check run on the new system will be training, continuous help to the departments that need help. We'll visit them in person, just go over entering recs, so they're all comfortable. That should, that should be done by the end of next week, and we should be printing checks two weeks from today. End of my report, Mayor.
Director Guddey?
Thank you, Mayor. Also would like to welcome Mr. Hoover. Think he did a stellar job tonight, like he's been here for a number of meetings, did a nice job, is doing a nice job in general. So again, welcome. Other than that, I'd like to remind council that as of July 1st, the virtual meeting allowance from the General Assembly will be expiring unless it's extended. The last time around, they waited to the last minute to extend it. We all kind of thought it was coming. This time around, with the recent governor's order relaxing almost all COVID regulations as of June 2nd, and the CDC now also relaxing their guidance to remove social distancing, mask guidelines as well. I'm highly doubtful the General Assembly will do anything to extend it, so I would plan on coming back to do non-virtual meetings, in-person meetings as of July. That's all I ask.
All right, any unfinished business? Do we have any new business?
Yes, Mayor. I would just like to jump on the bandwagon for Mr. Hoover. Mrs. Tully has asked us all to make arrangements with Mr. Hoover and spend some time with him, get to know him, and talk with him about different items. I was in City Hall yesterday. I'm working on a project with Mr. Chris Hall from the Building Department. And I told, I asked, I didn't tell, I asked Mr. Hoover about a certain item that I couldn't find very well. It was an old ordinance that had been repealed, and that I would like to work with him and try to locate all of that in its entirety. And by the time I got home, it was already in my inbox. Thank you very much. Made my life and Mr. Hall's life a lot easier because we've been also researching. We didn't have that information. We were researching what other cities are doing with that particular situation also. So again, Mr. Hoover, thank you so much.
Okay, real quick, the, the meeting in July, the first meeting has been canceled, so to Mark's point of in place, and actually in council chambers, it would be July 22nd unless something changes. I'll be glad to see everybody face to face again. Not that I don't like this, but second of all, Mayor, I just got a note back, Mr. Snell is fine for the next meeting. We'll set 7:15 for the Cemetery Board meeting, and then depending on the legislation, I'll set the work session based on what we have on the plate. And last but definitely not least, I'd also like to say thank you to all the directors and employees who have welcomed and are willing to spend time and give guidance to Mr. Hoover. And it's been very nice to be able to have him do that, other than we did get to see the jail, but that's the only time he's going to see the jail. And we, we really appreciate that you've taken the time to welcome him and to spend the time with him and answer any questions. Mark can now go back to just being the lawyer and not have to be the clerk of council. I'd like to say thank you, though, for you and your staff for helping us during that interim period of time. We never had a bump in the road, so thank you very much.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
I'd also welcome Mr. Hoover. I haven't had my opportunity yet, so welcome. It's been a pleasure working with you, the little we have so far, and I think you're going to be great, so welcome.
Yeah, you were in a meeting when we came up.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You will in a second. Oh, go ahead, Jessica.
Go ahead, Jeff. Go for it.
I was, I was just going to say I wanted to sneak in an opportunity to welcome Mr. Hoover as well before we adjourned, but go ahead.
I just want to say that since our last meeting, we've actually, it has been Public Service Recognition Week, Nurses Week, Teachers Week. There, the, the Police Week, and coming up is EMS Week. So we have a lot of amazing people to thank, people that work and live in our community and take care of us in our community. Those are all very important people, not to mention, I'm sure everyone, you know, recognizes their mothers and wives and sisters and aunties on Mother's Day. So all these great, important people, I just want to let you know that, you know, council couldn't do our jobs without you, our community wouldn't be thriving without you. All of people that fall under all these different things that we celebrate in May are, you, you are truly amazing folks, and thank you very much for taking care of all of us. That's all.
And thank you for that because we're trying our best to keep up with all the days, weeks, and months that are out there, and it's been a daunting task to keep up with them, because I mean, there's so many of them, but we want to recognize everyone, so thanks for pointing that out.
It was huge for all the most important folks.
All right, any other new business? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? All right, we are adjourned. Have a nice evening.
Good night, everyone.
You too.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Night, everybody.